All right, you're on record.
I will stand.
Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. It is Wednesday, October 29th, 2025, and it is 7:02 PM. Roll call, Mr. Berkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Musarela?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Reddy?
Present.
Chairwoman Graniani?
Present.
We have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz?
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Could you please stand with us, say the pledge of allegiance? Aye.
The Constitution of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Lamontowicz, do you swear or affirm that any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Is there any one in the public that has anything to say other than what is on our agenda for this evening? I see none.
Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act.
Application 25:32, T-Mobile, 1280 Route 46, Block 712, Lots 43.1, Zone B2, minor site plan with a C/ V variance to construct a permanent wireless facility. This application was carried from October 8th, 2025.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
It sounds like it's on. You just have to get really close to it.
Is that okay, Miss Sitt?
Yeah, of course.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Jennifer Kanerek from Parsippany, Sherman, and D. Arminia, on behalf of the applicant T-Mobile. Just to refresh the board's memory, from the October 8th meeting, T-Mobile filed an application to your board for site plan approval with associated use at bulk bearings relief. We are proposing to deploy a permanent... Pause.
Sorry.
It's okay. To deploy a permanent facility at Block 729, Lot 6.01, known as 1280 U.S. Route 46 East. This proposed wireless facility is a replacement site for the wireless installation that was located at 26 Route 46 East and currently has a temporary wireless facility located there until we can, you know, hopefully get approval for a permanent site. Specifically, we're proposing to deploy a permanent wireless facility consisting of nine panel antennas on the roof of the existing three-story building with a center line of 36 feet. We also are proposing a 14-foot by 7-foot equipment cabinet to be located underground in the rear of the property behind the building, and that will contain a total of two equipment cabinets with associated wireless equipment. There's also a proposed rooftop access ladder, rooftop access from the equipment compound proposed. When we were here last before the board back on October 8th, there was a recommendation made by the board to reduce the visibility of the antenna array sector in the rear of the building. In order to do so, we moved the antennas back 10 feet from its current location at the edge of the building, and in doing so, we needed to raise the height of the antennas by two feet in order to clear the roof of the building. I have with me this evening my engineer who will testify to the new location of the antennas on the rooftop of the building. I have also my RF consultant who will confirm that the new locations of the antennas will still enable T-Mobile to provide reliable coverage. And lastly, my planner who will testify to the reduction in visibility of the antennas due to their relocation, and he'll also present an example of the reflective film that we discussed that will be, that may be utilized if the board were inclined to grant approval so that they blend into the surroundings based on the reflective film that would be proposed. We did receive a board planner's report post-October 8th meeting from Mr. Chadwick with three minor comments. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else, any other reports? Nora?
No other we know of.
All right, thank you.
I follow that.
It's okay, thank you very much. No further housekeeping, I can put up my first witness.
Please.
Just as a clarification, did we get new documents? Because I didn't, I don't have a report because I never got new, didn't get any new documents.
No.
Okay, thank you. Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
So just state your name again for the right hand.
Sure, it's Joshua Cotrell, C-O-T-T-R-E-L-L, French Imparolo Associates.
And he's been previously sworn.
So I brought with me a revised plan. This was not submitted to the board.
So I think there was an A1 the last time.
Yes.
So we're up to A2.
A2. Today's date is the 29th.
What's the date, Josh, you got proof?
So the plan is titled elevation sheet A-03 with the latest revision date of October 20th, 2025.
Turn it that way a little bit, it's that way you can see all the way through. Just a little bit. What was the date of that plan? I'm sorry.
It has the last revision date of October 20th, 2025.
Thank you.
So A2 is an elevation view that was revised simply to show that the proposed antennas at the rear of the building are going to be set back from the face of the building 10 feet from the side and from the rear of the building. By doing that, it's also has to be raised two feet to clear the rooftop. So now, instead of this sector having a T-Mobile, an antenna top elevation of 40 feet above grade, it's going to be 42 feet above grade.
Does that need a variance?
Yes.
We already needed that.
You're what, over?
No, you're three.
Correct.
Who would explain the clearing of the rooftop and what potential clients would, if you moved it further back at the same height, would you lose? I guess this technology is line of sight, correct?
Yeah, that would be the RF.
Yeah.
My next witness.
And I'm just wondering, to service immediately across the street, you have to raise the thing two feet to reach that one user? How far the line of sight line, do you have a diagram on that?
I don't have a diagram of that, no.
Does everybody understand what I'm saying? It's a straight line of sight, so if the antenna is hitting the power pit on this building, there's not much of a power pit. The users closest to the buildings are the ones that they're trying to serve. And I'm wondering if they're served now at all, or if, I thought we were trying to get to another area that is north of...
Right.
...of this site.
That sector servicing a larger area.
Right.
I think the radio frequency engineer is better to answer that question for you.
Is my next witness.
Okay, why don't we go to him?
Go ahead.
Is there anything else, an engineer?
No, that's just, I was just presenting the revised plan.
It's 10 feet from the edge of the building.
Correct.
Thank you.
Wait, hold on, sir.
This is a view from the rear of the building, yes.
Just hold on, sir.
Sorry.
If you have questions, there'll be a chance for that. Do you have any more questions of him?
I do.
Okay, do you want to open it up to questions of the public?
Is there anyone in public that would like to speak on the testimony only of this witness?
There would be questions for this witness on the testimony that is given. Sir, if you have a question, you need to come up, identify, use the microphone, identify yourself, and then ask your question.
Thank you.
If you have a question, just speak, just first identify yourself.
Hi, Steve Patatra.
Where you live?
182 Hawkins.
Great, and do you have a question of this witness?
Yeah, when you were saying you were moving the towers back, does that mean towards the back of the building or towards the center of the roof?
Towards the center of the roof.
Anyone else in the audience have questions? Please, Mr. Gomez.
Ray Gomez, 185 Hawkins. Good evening, everyone.
Good question.
Can you use the microphone?
Yes, I can hear you.
We need you to be on the record.
I thought my mouth was loud enough that you could hear me. So says my wife. Just curious if the antennas could be moved closer towards Route 46 and still have the same amount of impact from a cell perspective?
The radio frequency engineer will testify to that.
Okay, so I'll reserve my questions for the next person. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board of this witness and his testimony? I see none. Please.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You can sit down.
Daniel Check, CZCH, Paracon Solutions.
Dan, if, based on the relocation of the antennas, could you just describe the impact, if any, would have on the coverage, especially with requests to be important matters? Question?
Correct. So we were asked to push the antennas back 10 feet, and we were asked how high an elevation we would need to clear the rooftop. So we came to the conclusion that we need to raise those antennas two feet additionally across the roof, above the roof line from the existing one foot to clear the antenna pattern, to allow for that beam to form without being obstructed by the structure being that the structure, that building that could interfere with the roof.
So it covers the same in-building as well as resident?
Correct. The coverage would still be retained with moving the antennas back, but also raising the antenna center line.
What happens if you don't raise the antenna another two feet?
The antenna pattern becomes obstructed, and not only does that affect close users, but it also affects the pattern in the long term as well. So you're not only affecting the close proximity of coverage, you're having an effect over the entire beam pattern. So if you don't raise the roof, or sorry, raise the antenna center line, then you're in a sense compromising the antenna pattern, which it's not as effective in a sense.
Is this area, I got the gist of this is that you're trying to get enough power to have in-building service.
Correct.
And that's what's lacking at this point?
Yes, that's the design criteria for T-Mobile.
Uniformly or just in certain areas?
Uniformly.
Okay. So if you let the building block this line of sight, the buildings, the users closest to the buildings will be the ones that are affected for in-building service?
Well, the purpose of clearing the roof in general with the beam of the antenna is to preserve the entire beam over the projected length. So let's just say, we didn't raise the antennas, we pushed it back 10 feet, you're obstructing the antenna pattern in, over the course of the entire coverage that it's providing. It's not just affecting local coverage, like I see where you're saying, where you, your concern is close coverage in a sense.
Well, I'm just wondering how many people are actually going to be affected by having the antennas, not the maximum strength to their home, see, you've got the antennas across the street, there's not really anything behind you for a while.
Yeah, well, like I said, you're in a sense obstructing the antenna pattern throughout the entire antenna pattern. So you're obstructing, in a sense, you're ineffectively using that power.
I didn't follow that at all.
If you obstruct the antenna pattern in close proximity, you're affecting the entire beam of the antenna. So let's just say, let's just say like you have a light bulb, let's just say, and now a signal is being reflected from the surface below it, it is also affecting the entire output of the light in a sense.
Is there a way to tilt it back and not compromise the bottom of that being above the line anyway? So it wouldn't be straight up? You tilt it back and you wouldn't get this...
In a sense, it could be creating up tilt, but that once again affects the coverage of the antenna, so...
But there wouldn't be anything obstructing it at that point, though, would there?
Correct, but that would have potentially interference issues caused to other sites that are even farther. Right? Because now you're directing the power upwards instead of down at the ground where all the users are, so you're not intending on servicing users that are in the air in a sense. You're primarily focusing on the ground. So you want to direct most of that energy towards the ground. You wouldn't direct a light bulb at the ceiling if you're trying to cover, you know.
Right, so I'm like a mile away and I don't get T-Mobile service in my basement, will I get it now?
Depends on scenario.
That's the goal.
Are we going to talk about these, what were they called, the...
Reflective? Yeah, my planner, I'll touch upon that.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
I assume you cannot mount these antenna power up to the ground, they have to be vertical?
No, they're designed to be mounted vertically, the way that they are positioned. Obviously, you're saying rotate the antennas 90 degrees in a sense?
Yeah.
No, that would completely eliminate the power that it has to reach the farther users.
I've never seen any that way, so I...
They're kind of designed with the intentions of being installed in that orientation.
How about if it was mounted on the side of the building? Is that a possibility, or that way it's not up top, it's on the side of the building, you wouldn't be obstructing period at that point?
Yes, obviously that is possible, but usually that's applied on a building of higher elevation. If you, you know, you were dealing with a pretty low elevation building as is, so, you know, if you mount the antenna so low to the ground, then you're greatly affecting coverage.
I'm talking about the top of the, top of the building, right? You're giving, what, six feet difference? Is that gonna...
That is a drastic difference just due to the, yeah, just due to how close this side is.
How about if you put half of it above the building and the other half? Like, no, I'm saying mounted from the middle, the top would be over the top of the building. I'm just looking out for the...
It's still going to affect the coverage, no matter where you put it on the building because of the lower elevation, unfortunately.
Okay.
Any other questions on the board?
Yeah, I don't know if you're the right person to ask this, but is anybody else with T-Mobile going to be using these antennas?
I believe...
Every T-Mobile user, if you have T-Mobile as a carrier...
You know, I have another, another...
Carrier?
Carrier.
Well, if you have Optom, they hang off of the T-Mobile towers too. Optomobile.
Um, by granting you, if we do grant you permission to use this, will we open you up the door for other carriers to, where to put their antennas on this building?
There would be interest from them?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for the other carriers.
You have exclusive use to...
Yeah, I'm here for representation of T-Mobile, so I can't speak for the other carriers whether they want to co-locate on this, on this rooftop.
I think you, there was some testimony at the last meeting about you're not, you don't have any plans to co-locate at this time.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I'm not here representing anybody but T-Mobile.
Understood. Where did we get with the putting the antenna on the side of the building? You answered a question, but you didn't.
Yeah, well, Jennifer correctly answered that, you know, obviously you're losing a lot of elevation as to how high the antennas are from the ground, so you're losing in a sense, coverage by doing so.
Does it really matter?
Yes, I would say it's rather critical at such a low elevation. Our antenna center lines are not...
We're talking a difference of eight feet.
On a 36-foot building?
Yeah, that, that's a pretty drastic change from a coverage perspective. Every, every height, every foot off the ground gets you better coverage.
Any other questions from the board?
Hold on.
Are there any questions from the audience of the testimony that has been given by this gentleman? You have to come up, please.
Yeah, just identify yourself.
Just identify yourself again, please.
Steve Patatra, 182 Hawkins Avenue. With all this stuff, what's the potential, is there any health, potential health risks? And any risks to, you know, the health devices? You know, if somebody has a pacemaker or anything?
I'm going to let the question stand.
Okay.
If this, if this witness can answer the question, you can answer the question. If you can't, then just say, I can't answer that question.
Correct. So we prepared an FCC analysis for this site to make sure that it is compliant with FCC regulations, and we found that it is compliant with all FCC regulations as well as state regulations.
Do you have another question?
Definitely didn't ask a question.
Well, he answered your question. You may not like the answer to the question, but he answered it.
He was looking for more...
Yeah, so the FCC sets guidelines to make sure that obviously emissions are safe. So we have to abide by those guidelines, we have to make sure that the site is within set guidelines, and we do our analysis to confirm that it is well below those standards, and we confirm that this site will be below those standards.
At least submitted, if you have any interest, we submitted a compliance report with our application that's on file with the board secretary. The specifics as to how that's all calculated and completed.
Do you have any other questions?
I'm going to be sitting here.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
No questions.
Well, could you just come up to make sure that, just identify yourself again, just on the right.
Ray Gomez, 185 Hawkins Avenue.
Thank you.
A quick question for you. Now that there's elevation with the new cell antenna, can it be moved towards the front of the building, towards Route 46? Because you are replacing, I know last time we spoke, we were here a few weeks ago, you're replacing the one that was nearest to Route 80, correct, that antenna? So this is replacing this. So in, and can we move this antenna as close to Route 46 and out back as possible, just for the purposes of, it's going to look really bad from my backyard. I'm just curious if that's one option. And I would also like to explore the side option that we were talking about as well, the antenna on the side of the building, and if there are any cases of applications like that in this particular case.
So in respect to pushing the antennas even farther back to 46, that will be a possibility, but of course, the farther back that we move from the edge of the roof, we will of course have to accommodate with an increase in height elevation. So as we saw, we moved 10 feet back from the roof ledge, so we have to go an additional two feet up in elevation of the antenna center lines. So obviously, if we go back even, let's just say another 10 feet, we'll have to go yet another two feet up in elevation. So now, instead of there being a difference of three feet, now it'll be five feet.
And the second part of the question, are there other instances where there was a side mounting that's maybe not as, as obtrusive as this particular case would be?
Well, yes, you can install the antennas on the side of a building, that is a possibility, and it would not have any effect on the like local obstructions that we're trying to avoid here to the antenna pattern, but of course, that'll have a drastic reduction in coverage provided from this site. So, you know, we're looking to optimize the coverage to the best of our ability, and usually installing the antennas on the top of the roof provides the best coverage, especially in this case where our elevation is already pretty limited.
So basically, your answer would be different if we were talking about a building that was a total height of 60 feet or 70 feet or more?
But it still is an option. Right? Just want to make sure.
I can't...
We have to explore that.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Gomez?
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience?
Just identify yourself, please.
Pat Patatra, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I just got a question for the lady here.
Well, she's, she's not the witness, she's an attorney. Do you have any questions of the witness?
So I think the question went to him too.
Okay.
Is if, I'm not sure, though, T-Mobile will allow other companies to come in and add on to these antennas?
Well, other companies would have to make a similar application. Just because this board, if this board were to grant this application, that doesn't mean that another carrier automatically gets that same approval.
Okay, so they do, do have to come before you before any more can be added. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have one more?
Hi, Steve Patatra.
With this whole thing with the height, did you guys look at the light towers over at the tower building? This side is pretty full.
Did you explore all the locations?
Yes, this was the only viable option that we came up with.
I believe that was your testimony at the last hearing as to why this was the only viable option in the area.
Yeah.
Okay. The question was, could you tie, put these antennas on those poles that are going up with Topgolf?
Now, the... How, how has all those high towers, for the fields, like the field?
Oh, okay.
Smithfield?
Smithfield, we did look into it, three acres, there was no ability to put it on.
How about the, what is it called, the gulf?
We actually...
Topgolf. They kicked you off the property.
I think, I think there was testimony about why you had to leave Topgolf. As to why you're going through this exercise.
We did try to locate on Topgolf as well.
Okay.
Oh, the building and the poles.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions from the audience? Does my board have any other questions?
Yeah, sorry. So it has to be right in that area, this antenna, because as a former president of Little League, we had tons of antennas on the water tower that's right by the Little League, and that's much higher up. And I don't know if this has to be in that particular area, but another option would be, they just actually replaced them all. So I seen them put new ones up there, I just thought...
Yeah, usually when we're dealing with coverage from sites, we would like to stay with as close to the existing site as possible in order to retain that same coverage footprint that is currently being provided by that site that is currently located at Topgolf. So, yeah, obviously staying as close as poss, as close as we can to the original site location is ideal.
So what's general scope of distance from there that would jeopardize the integrity of the signal? Would a mile be a big issue?
A mile would be a very drastic issue, that, that would completely miss the coverage objective from this, for this site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, board? Cabinet of witness, my last witness, please.
Raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Quick, state your name, please.
Timothy M. Kronk, K-R-O-N-K.
And you were qualified the last time.
Yes, correct. I think I'll, there was, since there was just some questions about the, the search area where this site could be replaced, I'd like to recall exhibit, this was A1, which had the October 8th date of, for this meeting, these other dates and exhibits where I mentioned this was a planning board exhibit when we were doing the temporary installation over on the Topgolf property. And the reason I was, just wanted to put up this exhibit was because the area that we were looking for to replace the original rooftop installation on 1259 Route 46 only went about halfway down the shopping mall, because there is another T-Mobile rooftop just over here, just to the east. And then it was up to, it was up to Smithfield and a little bit over farther on 46. So it was not a mile, because there's several sites that T-Mobile has within a mile. So it was very, very close to the, the original spot, and I mentioned, we did try to lease a property over on the other side of 46, which would have been a permitted location. This lease did not, this lease fell through, and that is the only reason we just moved across into the B2 zone on the other side of Route 46, to maintain close proximity to that site that is being replaced. This was also an exhibit at the last hearing, but this exhibit wasn't marked because it matched the photo exhibit, the aerial that was in the photo package. I have subsequently modified it to put two more photo dots on here, so I do believe we need to mark this now. So that will be A3? Exhibit A3 is a, the Google Earth image. It's the same one that was in the visual analysis package that was submitted to the board. The two dots, there was five, five yellow dots on here prior. There is now two white dots, number six and number seven. These are new photo locations that were taken subsequent to the last meeting. There were some questions about the visibility along Summit and Hawkins due to the dense vegetation along Summit Street and, between Summit Street and the parking lot. Those two... This photo board here has photos number six and number seven. These were taken on October, October 10th. And photo number six represents a location in the dentist's parking lot, right in front of the residential property that faces on Hawkins, 185. This is looking towards the compound area where the proposed equipment is on the ground. And this does show the large evergreen vegetated buffer along Summit Ave between Summit and the parking lot. Photo number seven, represented by white dot seven. This is the intersection of Summit Street and Hawkins. Same thing, looking back from that location towards the equipment area at the base of the building. And once again, heavy dense evergreen buffer along this area and with no visibility. Well, there's the existing dumpster there, and then the proposed T-Mobile equipment compound would be located next to it. So based upon these photos, I do not believe there would be any visibility from the street there of, into the proposed compound. Could we just mark that A4, please? Oh, sorry. Just show, don't show the, just shows the...
It's still there, it's before.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't represent it.
So out of curiosity, on picture six here, where would the antenna be located at that point, on that building, but whereabouts?
Probably right about the highest point of those trees.
And that's going to be, that's where it's going to be moved, to that location?
Yes, well, I'll have other, I'll have the other photos.
Okay, thank you.
That was primarily to show the vegetated buffer, that there was no visibility from that area to the proposed compound. Next exhibit is exhibit A5. This is a photo that was, we were discussing the reflective film. This first photo is actually an existing conditions photo that was provided to me by one of the sales reps for the film company. This is a rooftop in Montclair. What they had done was they had painted antennas on this rooftop. And in the middle, they took one of the antennas and put the mirrored film on the antenna. So this photograph here is just a representation of how the mirrored film that we discussed last time looks next to the painted antenna. And then the next batch, I'll go back to the original photo simulations and show you, to you with the mirrored film on it. Okay, the next, the next five exhibits I have, these are the same photo locations as was presented to you or submitted in the application patch, package and submitted at the last hearing. The five photos on the left are the same existing conditions. On the right-hand side, the computer simulation, in the computer simulations, the location of the antennas has now been moved back 10 feet to match the engineering drawings. And that one antenna, the tallest antenna, has been raised two feet. These photos also do have the reflective film simulated on them. The first one here, it's hard to see the film because it's a side view of the antennas. But the other ones, you'll clearly see the film on the antennas. The only ones you've moved are the ones in the rear? Yes, the rear, yes, the rear sector that was discussed by the board last time, moving it back from the edge. The front, we did not move, so it's just the, just the rear sector that was moved back. So that's A6? Um, oh, I guess I gotta mark these two.
So this film would cover the face of all the antennas in the back?
What's that?
This film would cover the face of all the antennas?
I put the film on all the antennas on the whole building. Everything.
The first photograph you passed out, you had four antennas.
Yes, that was, that was, correct. Yes, that was just for, that they had, the manufacturer had prepared that just for comparison purposes.
Yours, you might want to, when we have a chance, hand that over to the audience to see if they...
Oh, certainly, certainly. Okay, so exhibit A5 is the...
A6.
A6.
Fixed, A6. There's the photo 1A, 1B in your package that was, now been modified. Do you have the, the, the board, last one round?
I think it was the first one or...
It's the last one that we had. Yeah, yeah. That's them, yeah, yes. Yes.
Well, you're filling out the identification of that exhibit. That pic, that exhibit that was handed out to the audience, there's one antenna, that's the one that's, and all the rest of them aren't disguised.
Okay, this is the most disguised.
Okay, exhibit A7 corresponds to 2A, 2B from the package. This is, this location has the, the two sectors from the, the front of the building that are visible because it's a photo location from Route 46. And these I did simulate with the film as well. Since we were discussing it, I did all the antennas with the films, so the board can see it. Exhibit A8 corresponds to 3A, 3B from the package. This is also the photo location from Route 46. This is right in front of the TopGolf driveway, looking back towards the subject property with the, the antennas simulated with the, the film on there as well. Exhibit A9 corresponds to photos 4A, 4B in your original package. Existing conditions photo from Hawkins Ave on the left and the right, computer simulation. In this computer simulation, you'll see the antennas have been moved back in the alpha sector, the rear of the building, as depicted on the engineering drawings and described by the engineer tonight. These photos also have been simulated with the mirror film on them. And I certainly think you will see there's a big difference between the original simittle and what we are proposing now. And exhibit A10, A10 corresponds to photo 5A, 5B in your original package. This is the photo that's actually taken onsite in the parking lot. It's, you know, beyond, just beyond the, the evergreen screen along Summit Street. So this, the view that you have here is purely from the, what would be in the parking lot. And with the existing conditions photo on the left, the computer simulation on the right. And here, the antennas have been moved back 10 feet as described by the engineer with the largest antenna having its rad center raised two feet to clear the edge of the roof. And as the board members and professionals were saying, you know, normally, mounting on a building facade would be an option. If this building was just tall enough to get to the, the rad center of these antennas, that would have been an option. The building just has to be tall enough to meet the radio frequency objectives. And unfortunately, this building's not. And when the building, 1259, across the street where the original site was, that building was only two and a half stories like this one. That's why those antennas were installed on the roof in a similar manner. The building just was not tall enough to locate the antennas on the facade. So as you'll see in this one, the compound is still shown as the same as before. It will have slats. It was kind of filtered out so you could see the equipment in there. We have the proposed ladder, locked cage ladder on the back, cable tray, and then the alpha sector, which has been moved back 10 feet. And the mirror film has been shown on the antennas in that sector as well.
Is there a requirement to have the ladder there? I mean, is it part?
Yes, there's no access to the, the rooftop here.
I mean, how often are people going up there to work on the antennas? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, there's no access at all, so...
I mean, if they had a regular ladder, like, it'd climb up?
No, that's too, you can't climb up that, that ladder. It's definitely has to have a, it has to have a ladder there. But it's got a cage and it'll be locked, so nobody else will, will have it accessed. There was a question before about T-Mobile, other carriers coming here. T-Mobile does not own this building. They just, they've only leased this little bit of space for the, for these antennas and the ground. It's private property owner, so, you know, we have no control over that. This application is just for T-Mobile, and any future dealings would be... It's actually a small rooftop. If, you know, depending on the carrier, they could have problems finding locations with the required separations and azimuths that would be needed on this rooftop. So don't even know if it would work for somebody else, but T-Mobile does not control the rooftop.
Are there any questions? I'm sorry. Have you completed your testimony, sir?
Well, I mean, the board had a lot of questions about redesigns. I mean, are there still, is there still other things that the board members would like to see?
I will ask them right now.
Then let, that's, ask them and see what they say.
Are there any questions from the board of the testimony given?
I've got some, I think. The, all this equipment that's on, can be on this roof. Any idea what, how, how much of the roof it's gonna take, it's using? And is what percentage? 10%, 20%?
Our engineer, I mean, you have the...
That'd be for the engineer?
Just, yeah, he would have to come up with a, a number. He's asking the percentage of the roof that the, the sleds would be covering.
That, that it occupies?
Yes.
Oh. I can look at it and probably give you an estimate, just, I'll give you a couple minutes.
Just give them a minute.
And does also the roof have to be, have extra supportage for these antennas?
So for the front two sectors that we're proposing along Route 46, we're proposing them to be on ballast frames, which, which is essentially a sled that sits on the roof. And then you add weight to it, which, which stabilizes the antennas. The sector at the rear, since we're moving it back towards the center of the roof, that's gonna be a little bit different because of the height of the antennas. So we're gonna actually attach a frame to the building elements on that sector.
And the frame is made of?
Steel.
So it's gonna be steel?
It's just gonna be different than we're, we had at the original application because we moved it back and then we couldn't use that, the same type of sled installation. So it'll be tied, it'll be tied into the building framing. So that was the modification that we had to make by moving it back.
Is there anything else on that roof?
There's mechanical equipment on the roof.
And, and what is that used for?
That's, that's just a service to building itself, air conditioning, heating.
And how is that serviced? Now, was, that must have access to the roof?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know. There's no interior access. There's no exterior access. I don't know.
So there's no access to service what's there?
Correct, right.
There has to be some sort of way to get up there, access it, without having that hole.
There's, you, if you go to the second floor, you climb out a window. You can put a ladder there from the short roof up to the top roof, which does not meet OSHA requirements.
Well, could you have a ladder from the ground to the short roof and another ladder from the short roof?
That does not meet, there's, doesn't meet OSHA standard.
So should that building be shut down because they can't get to the air conditioning units?
There's more maintenance requirements for a wireless telecommunications installation than there, there is for an, you know, an HVAC unit.
Any other questions from the board, Bernie?
No, I'm just curious, just the percentage of coverage.
Okay.
I mean, the, the sleds are, I would say, are probably 10 foot by 20, so they're 200 square feet each, so 400 square feet. The other sector is probably 100 square feet, if that. So probably, you know, it's probably 20% of the roof. I mean, I don't have the exact dimensions.
To 20%. So you couldn't have anybody else come in and...
Come in. Well, they'd have to come before us as...
Well, once we've done it once, why not do it twice unless we put some restrictions?
Okay. Are there any other questions at the board? Are any questions in the audience of the testimony given, Mr. Gomez? Yes, whatever.
Ray Gomez, 185 Hawkins. So if it's okay if I may stand and just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So between line of sight number six and number seven on A3, I also have a photograph to show, if that's okay. Can I, do I present as an, as an exhibit?
When are you presenting?
Okay.
Are you gonna speak either in support of or in opposition?
In opposition, not necessarily in opposition, but I just wanna make a, a statement.
You can introduce that photograph at that time.
Okay. So with this photograph, I would like to present, right between... At the end, okay, got it, got it.
The chance to ask him questions.
Got it, got it, okay. So in between six and seven, there is a buffer here. Can you point out exactly where that power station is? Forgive me, I don't have the right name, or the power station that's gonna be over here?
There's the power station that you are referring to. I believe you're talking the equipment compound that is proposed to be on the ground.
Yes.
It's right in the middle of the building, on the back, adjacent to the two dumpsters.
Okay.
So, middle of the building, there's a red, see that red box on the ground there?
Yep.
That's about the location of it, behind those two dumpsters and the fence dumpster enclosure.
Wonderful.
Another question, would there be interruption from cell service if this tower was on the outback side of the building? So I'm presenting A10, where you can...
Asked your question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did ask your question.
Okay, got it.
Answer that question that's pending.
So would there be an impact in cell service? If you see where those towers are on the left-hand side, if they were on the opposite side?
Antennas.
Yeah, the antennas. The antennas. If they were placed on the outback side, now they would not be in our line of sight as much as they are here. So just flip them.
What hap-
If I were to put these on this side?
Sure. Okay. Well, so every 10 feet you would go back, you would have to be raising them another two feet. So 30 feet across the building, so if you went 30 feet over here, you'd have to raise them another six feet. It's line of sight technology, you can't hide the antennas, they have to be able to-
Nobody wants to hide them, we just want to put them on the other side of the building if possible. That's what I'm suggesting. Or side mount it. So it's on the other side of the building, then it's not an issue.
You have to ask the other-
Yeah, that's, I shouldn't have asked before, so forgive me.
Maybe you can answer the question. Does it make any difference if you slide the antenna to the other corner?
As long as the sector is still facing as correct, as with direction, then it shouldn't have a-
Does it make any difference?
It wouldn't make any.
Okay.
As long as it's raised the appropriate amount.
Okay. So it wouldn't make a difference to us in our line of sight, that's why I'm asking the question. So thank you, I appreciate that.
And then after radio frequency approves it, then it goes to the structural engineer to determine whether that is an option to even locate it there.
Perfect. Thank you. The other thing is as well, I do want to talk about this image.
That would be later.
I'm so excited about it. It does go along with the line of sight.
Just, we need to keep the record clean, okay?
Clean, yes.
Do you have any other questions of your witness?
I do not.
Do you have any other witnesses?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay, what do we do now? Yes.
Comments for, you have a question of this witness?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Steve Attacca, 182 Hawkins Ave.
Yes.
Is there any other than the one against the back of the building? Is there any other stuff you have to put in?
Equipment?
Yeah.
No, no. The, the equipment is located in that fencing compound on the ground. The fiber cables go up the back of the building in that, in that tray, and they go to the end, the antennas, there's nothing else required for the application.
Is there anyone in the audience that is in favor of this application? Please come forward. I see none. Is there anyone in the audience that is in opposition to this application?
Now you have to be sworn.
Okay.
So raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to gain, about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Re-identify yourself, please.
Ray Gomez, 185 Hawkins Ave.
You can put your hand down.
Thank you.
You have a photograph?
I do have a photograph, I would like to submit.
Did you take that photograph?
My neighbor, Pat Attacca, did.
Okay, can you tell me, what is depicted in the photograph?
So this is line of sight between what A3 depicts as .6 and .7.
And you know that because you live right there?
I live right there. Literally, so this is my house right here.
Okay, does that photograph fairly and accurately represent that view from that location?
This one does.
Yes or no?
This one does, yes.
Okay, great. So what would you like to tell the board about that photograph?
This is my view of that parking lot right now. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody sees my line of sight and Patty's and Steve's line of sight to that back, back area over here. So that, that's all I wanted to submit. So it's just not necessarily saying that you're wrong per se, but I just had a different perspective of what we see right now from, from our yard.
We're gonna, we're gonna take that photograph, and we're gonna mark it 01.
01, okay.
I think it's 02.
Oh, there wasn't 01?
I had one other one, line of sight from my backyard that I submitted last night.
Okay, gotcha, so we're on 02.
Yeah, 02.
And that would be 02 with today's date.
So I'm looking at Summit between six and seven, towards the, my purview is, is the back parking lot, towards outback, which is right back there if you're familiar with it.
So it's not, it's not where the equipment-
Correct, correct. At first I thought it was, that's why I was bringing it to your attention.
Okay, so that view that you're shown in A1, you, you can't see the back of the building?
Correct.
Where the equipment is going to be installed.
Correct. At first I thought maybe you were able to, but then when he pointed out that it wasn't, it was closer to the building, we're probably not gonna be able to see it. Patty and Steve might be able to see it from their perspective, just because the angle is, is this way and it's wide open. There is, the trees are beautifully manicured over here, but it stops and there's about a 20 foot, 20 foot empty buffer right now.
Is that where the dumpster is?
That's where the, yeah, that's, that's dumpster, there's a snowplow, a barbecue grill back there, Weber. So there's all kinds of stuff back there, but that's not the issue for this group right now, but just bringing it to your attention.
Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
No, my, my comments from last time still say, I still object to this, but I'm also willing to compromise. There's three things I'm looking for. So if we do go forward, I do not want to be able to see these towers, if possible.
Antennas.
Antennas, yes. Antenna towers. These antennas, because they're now gonna be 11 or 12 feet high, correct?
No.
How high are they gonna be?
I can't, doesn't lie.
How high, what's the height? Anybody? Somebody?
The top of the tallest antenna.
The top of the tallest antenna.
In reference to the top of the-
To the top. But you're, you're looking for a variance that's gonna go three feet above the current variance, correct?
What's the distance between the top of the building and the top of the tallest antenna?
So from the top of the parapet, the top of the tallest antenna in that back sector is gonna be 11 feet.
That's sizable. So I just want to make sure that's as far away from my line of sight. I don't think I'm asking for that much. This issue was addressed, so it is unsightly, of course, as you can see. I would love for it to be moved somewhere else, but if it has to stay there, I understand. But I would love to see this on the opposite side of the building, because I wouldn't see it at all. So I'm trying to be a good neighbor, but also think about what this would look like from your backyard. That's all I have to say. So I do still object, but I'm, I'm also in compromise mode because I also want people to have good cell set, a cell tower service. But I don't think I'm asking too much for too much here.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Of course.
What is this picture of? Because I don't see the building in there at all.
Yeah, so this, this picture, it's a, it's a tough angle, sorry for knocking down your stuff. So if I'm looking from here, you can basically see all this back here, that's where all those snowplows are.
Okay, so this is, this is just something on the side, it's nothing to do with the application?
Not anymore, no, correct, correct. Originally I thought it was something a little bit, that the power plant may be back here, so my mistake on that one.
You mean equipment compound?
Power plant, yeah.
For the record, it's an equipment compound.
Understood, I understand. Anything else you'd like to say?
No, that's all. Thank you so much for your time.
Chairman?
Yes.
The RF expert, I have a question. If you could come back up.
Just hold on, man, there's a question pending for one of the prior witnesses.
If we look at the photograph of 5B, it shows the power equipment-
Equipment compound.
Compound, equipment compound.
Yep.
And it shows the three antenna on the left side of the roof. Do you have the picture there?
Yeah.
It's 5B. That's your word.
Yep.
There's the, you were talking about, I guess, the signal having to go over the roof in order to, to be proper, to be proper, and that's why you had to, so if you move it back 10 feet, you had to raise it?
Correct.
All right. Now, is that true if you move it from one corner to the other corner of the building also?
It more so has to do with respect to how much of the roof is exposed directly in front of the antenna, right, so that you're not obstructing the antenna pattern so close to the-
Well, the antenna pattern have to go from that left corner of the roof? Or is it have, if you move it to the right corner, closer to the outback side, is that, does that change the direction of the-
No, as long as the antennas are still facing the same direction, obviously there might need to be a height increase of those antennas to further clear the roof edge.
So moving it from one corner to the other corner might also require it to be higher?
Correct.
That's what I want to get clearer on.
Is that because the antennas need to be pointed towards that direction?
They, they are directional antennas, so they do need to be pointed where they currently are, right? So that's why they're, they're not in line with the face of the building, they're angled in a sense.
But if the roof is the same height on both corners, wouldn't that then-
There would still be more roof in front of the antennas.
If you moved it straight line across?
Correct.
Because of the way in which the antennas are pointed?
Correct, yes.
So it would still say, still stay at the 11-foot height?
It may need to actually be increased slightly in elevation.
What are we talking about? How many feet?
I could probably roughly say maybe another two feet.
So looking at 13-foot height?
Correct.
If it's moved to the outback side of the building?
Correct.
That's, yeah, that's-
That was your question.
That was my question. Point of clarification, I guess. Yeah, because you see, do you see the angle these are at? That's, so if we move it over here-
Do you have any other questions from the board?
Through this roof.
Mr. Chairman?
No. I guess I'll follow up on the other comment, the, the ladder, could that be put on the side of the building by the outback?
You wouldn't want to.
I don't know, I'm just-
That's their entrance.
No, no. Oh, is it? I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
The side on the outback has the parking area with a very narrow landscape area between the parking curb-
The entrance to the building.
And the building, and also has the entrance to the main building there.
Okay.
Any other questions of the board, please? Please?
I have a question to Mr. Gomez. Gomez, you've been objective because, is this because of signal interceptive for internet or telephone or, I kind of, just want to learn that point from you.
So for, for me, it's not about any type of connectivity, it's about appearance, property value, and blight. For me, it's, it's gonna look pretty bad from my perspective. So those are the main things, property value, what it looks like. Is it absolutely necessary to be in that particular spot? That's what I'm objecting to.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Any other member of the public that has a comment? Mr. Attacca?
You need to, you need to come forward, take the microphone, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
What is your comment?
I just have another question. With the equipment locker, remember that?
Equipment compound.
Equipment compound? How much noise does that thing make? Does that make?
It does, if there's fans in there that expel heat, so it does make a noise. I would say it's comparable to a refrigerator.
But either way, we would have to comply with the township noise order and standards of the property lines, so we would make sure that we would be compliant with that.
Is the equipment cabinet, we would not talk to the-
Equipment cabinets, yeah. Yeah, there are equipment cabinets within an equipment compound. Mr. Attacca, is your answer? Anyone else, Mrs. Attacca?
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just identify yourself again for the record, please.
Patricia Attacca, 182 Hawkins Ave.
Thanks. What would you like to say?
One thing I wasn't sure of, and I'm not sure of, is if they are asking for the railroad crossings to be removed from the parking lot, is that on your agenda at all?
I don't think they have anything to do with that parking lot.
I want to make sure that. Secondly, I am against it. I feel that we have a lot of cell towers out there that these could be added on to. I just think there's better spots where there are no houses. But, you know, it is what it is, and it's it. Sorry.
Any other questions from the audience? I see none.
Do you want to sum up it all?
I do.
Okay. If you want, can you, when you sum up, can you just identify, just for the record, exactly what variances you're asking for, if you can? Sorry, just-
I think I can.
Just so that when, if someone frames a resolution, they know exactly which ones you-
And I could certainly follow that up with a written documentation of that, because I missed any of it. I want to thank the board for their time and the public interest as well from this application. You heard testimony from several experts throughout the course of the hearing, that's the engineer, RF engineer, and clients and a planner. As shown through the testimony, applicant is requesting approval for nine panel antennas on the rooftop of an existing three-story building with a center line of 36 feet. A 14-foot by 7-foot equipment gated equipment compound to be located on the ground in the rear of the property behind the buildings will contain a total of two equipment cabinets. Testimony from our RF engineer confirms the need for the wireless coverage that is replacing the former permanent site that had been decommissioned, and that emissions from the facility proposed here being within all state and federal standards, and that the site will operate well within the law of frequency exposure pursuant to FCC guidelines. Courts New Jersey have found that generally the issuance of an FCC license is sufficient for a carrier to establish that the use of the general welfare and that T-Mobile maintains four such licenses with the FCC. You heard testimony from the engineer regarding the site plan and overall design, specifically due to comments raised by the board and the public, we took the opportunity to come back before the board to relocate those antennas. In doing so, by pushing them back 10 feet, we had to raise them by two feet in height. Additionally, we also heard testimony from our planner regarding the benefits of improved wireless telecommunications, and that the site is suited for a wireless facility that will replace the former permanent site located at 1269. With respect to the facility, we submit that there is no issue of any detriments, there's no traffic, one technician once every four to six weeks, there's no noise about any standard coming from the facility, no vibration, flare, smoke, no noxious odors or anything of the such. In terms of the variance relief, we are looking at use variance for the use not being permitted. We also have minimum side yard setback, where 24 is required and the equipment compound is proposed at 5.2. We are also requiring variance relief due to alteration of the non-conforming structure as a result of the existing height of the building. And I believe in reference to your engineer report, you also noted that the antennas require additional relief because we are extending more than eight feet of a highly existing building, where we're now proposing 11 feet. And I believe that covers all the variances. The applicant submits that it has met the statutory criteria for grant of site plan approval and use variance relief, weighing the evidence presented and supported the application, and based upon the proof presented to the board, we would respectfully request approval of the application, and ask that the board grants approval for same as testified to you throughout the hearing. Thank you. You didn't mention the light shield that will be put on the antenna. Yes, that's all, that's a part of the application that was in my bid as well. Thank you, I did appreciate that.
Would you go, were you aware of the three conditions, see what they had? Well, one of the conditions was at, was the reflective, and your client is willing to add the reflect-
For all of the antennas on the building, correct.
You already indicated that you've moved the location of the antenna from what was originally proposed.
From the edge of the rear of the building, 10 feet back.
I don't know if the board has any other comments with respect to any other conditions.
Does the board have any other comments?
I think you might want to- I would say not to exceed 20% of the roof surface.
You might want to discuss whether or not you would agree to move the antenna to the outback stake outside and increase the variance from 11 feet to 13.
Would your client be willing to agree to that without having to do the analysis that would determine exactly how high that need to be?
I'd have to do a sidebar with my, with my team with regard to that request.
Because you don't really know.
I, I, we need structural approval as well as landlord approval as well.
I don't know how the board feels about that.
I, I think we will, we'll disguise this as much as possible.
I'm hung up on the not being closest to the outback, so, I mean, that's, I think if we can do anything for them, I mean, we're putting up the ladder and the other thing. If we can move it towards the outback side, look into that, you know, that's, that's how I feel. That's my opinion. That's the way my vote will go.
You need to postpone this so that other members can.
We don't need to. You have a call.
We have a call.
We have plenty of people.
But if you're.
But it's a D variance.
Well, she needs.
We need five.
Five with a six. You've got six here. She needs, they need five.
If that's something that you guys are considering, I'd have to take a sidebar with my, my team.
Meaning moving them to the outback side.
Yeah, like we presented what we thought you guys wanted us to present, so this is a new.
Well, obviously, the last one, it wasn't mentioned the last time, and I just didn't think of it.
I'm just saying, I, I can't, just off the cuff, give an answer right now.
Could you have an answer as to?
Well, do you want to have a sidebar tonight?
I'd like to have a sidebar first with my team, and whether that's even something that we're going to consider. I'm sorry?
How are you going to know that your landlord will let you do that?
I want to discuss with my team first before we move forward. All right.
Unless you can call them.
Do you want to do that this evening? Have your sidebar?
Yeah, of course. We don't, if we're not going to move it, then we'll call for a vote.
How long do you need? We're just going to take a five-minute recess, folks. Okay, so let's start again.
Please repeat what you just told us, so you're on the record.
Certainly. I didn't know she wasn't there.
Yeah, sorry, Nora.
And Nora is integral to this.
I know, believe me, I know. So based upon the, the ask, it's too open-ended at this point for us to commit to moving tonight based on the fact that we would need RF approval. We need structural approval, and we need landlord approval in order to move the antennas again to another location.
Okay, so the question that I posed to you was, do you want the opportunity to do that and come back on another night? Or do you want the board to vote on it tonight? Seeing as how, as you know, you've got six members of the board here, and you need five for active votes.
Does the board want to see that other option?
I think there's at least, well, now I know of at least two members of the board that want to see that option.
That answers the question.
Okay, so you want to carry it to another night?
Yeah, and keeping in mind, we probably need additional variance relief because we're going to have to increase the height of the antenna.
You testified to that?
No, not if we, it's going to go to a D6. It's going to go to a D6 variance if we go higher with the antennas.
You mentioned 13 feet if you move it to the other side of the building.
Well, you don't, they don't know that, you don't know that for sure.
It's probably going to go higher. Because you're moving, you're talking us moving it like 30 feet, another 30 feet to the other side. So every 10 feet, you got to go higher, another two feet.
We're 11 now, so we move it 30 feet back, that's another six feet up, so we're, we're in D6 there.
So then the board would consider whether that's better or whether it's better the way you've currently proposed it? At that time, once you've investigated whether it's even a possibility to move it to that other location.
And it might not be. I just, but we will have to give you those answers. So when can we get back before you guys?
February 11th, 7:30.
When does your lease expire? Do you know?
No.
Probably Sunday. Or Saturday.
May I have a motion to approve?
The, the motion to carry.
Carry the application to 21125 at 7:30 in the evening.
So moved.
Madam Chair, if I just had one thing?
Yes.
I have a note in my, from the last meeting about getting the building height calculated per the ordinance. Because I believe if the building height, which does not include the, the antennas, is non-conforming, I think that introduces another variance for. Okay, but we don't have the building height calculated.
We can get that done before February.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know.
I would get it done before February.
Thank you. Adjournment, please. Motion to adjourn this 7 o'clock meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nora? Good night.
Want to move right into the next one?
Please, please.
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Board of Adjustment. It is Wednesday, October 29th, 2025, and it is 8:23 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given in that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 effect of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call. Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Mr. Musarella.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairwoman Gragnani.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lamontowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Correspondence, please, Nora.
We have correspondence received from Sebastian Gay, 3 De Ville Drive, requesting his application be carried from tonight to January 7th, 2026, without further notice, and with an extension of time for the board to make decision on the case through January 14th, 2026. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we also have correspondence from Mark Tell, 18 Jefferson Avenue, requesting his application be carried to January 14th, 2026, without further notice, but with publication and an extension of time for the board to make decision on the case through January 31st, 2026. Is there a motion?
Yes, motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Which case was that?
Tell.
Mark Tell. It's on the agenda. The resolutions, we're going to do them in four groups. Application 2478, 8 Stafford Terrace. Berkowitz, Ready, Willens and Gragnani, um, Willens out here. Berkowitz, Ready, and Gragnani can vote. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
Okay, the next two, application 2548, the Benedetto, and application 2543, the Raffia. Is there a, let me let you know who can vote. Berkowitz, Petty?
Wait, hold on a second. I'm sorry, Nora. That one, I didn't send you that one, did I? That's the two family that is being reviewed by the applicant's attorney.
Is it? Okay, I apologize. Then it's going to only be 2548, the Benedetto. Berkowitz, Petty, Gragnani. Is there a motion?
So moved. I'll move, I move the motion.
Second? Petty? Berkowitz, Petty, Gragnani. Um, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Sorry about that. Application 2503 Mara, application 2504 Simmons, and application 20, it's just going to be those two. Berkowitz, Quinn, and Gragnani can vote. Is there a motion?
I move it.
Second?
Move.
By Quinn?
Yes.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
And the last one, application 2542, Franciscan Sisters. Apologize. Berkowitz, Musarella, Ready, and Gragnani can vote. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Musarella?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes.
And that is it?
Thank you.
Application. Application 25:58, Timothy Kelly, 3 Noble Street, block 408, lot 7, zone R3. A C variance to construct in addition contrary to sections 430-35, columns 10 and 13. Mr. Kelly? Please come forward.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and spell your last name, please.
Tim Kelly, K E L Y, 3 Noble Street.
And please tell the board what it is that you'd like to do.
I'd love to do an addition of 36 square feet. A ranch house that's roughly 12 feet off the one back corner, 25 feet across. Should make it handicap accessible for my needs, as well as the existing hallway bathroom. Take the existing bathroom and the bedroom, but widen the hallway back to make that accessible. So I'm looking for 0.7% over coverage on impervious and 2.2 on lot coverage.
Building. Build, building, building coverage.
Have you seen the letter from the township engineer?
I've seen the letter.
There's a letter memo from the township engineer dated September 22nd, 2025. Are you familiar with that letter?
The letter's on the average, the shovel continues to be.
Okay, so you didn't get a letter from the township engineer?
A letter just saying that, I know I initially did the application, and I had to apply for the zoning.
Right. There was a letter, a memo that the board has, and I'm happy to give you a copy of it, from, from the township engineer, indicating that since you're increasing impervious coverage, you would have to add some stormwater mitigation measures? You never got that? Okay. Why don't you take just a minute to look at it? It's not as extensive as ones the board has seen before. So the question I would have for you is, do you want an opportunity to review whether you would have to add stormwater mitigation management measures before the board proceeds with the application? Because the board's likely to require you to do that. So you may want to look into what that might entail before you commit yourself to doing it.
Which would entail going back to the engineer's time that he was requesting.
Correct.
Or you could take your chances and ask the board to approve it subject to the engineer, which is probably not going to be.
Which is fine, but if it needs to get done, it needs to get done.
But we don't, but you don't know what the cost would be. That's.
Maybe it could be a prohibitive cost or not, because you don't know.
It could be simple.
This is prohibitive cost, so it is.
Yeah, understood.
Because at the end of the day, if the cost is that outlandish, well, then I would have to make a smaller addition not to potentially.
You might make that decision. Yeah, you might make that kind of decision. Or it may be that it's a relatively simple fix. But.
I mean, my lot is, my lot is fairly large for what I'm requesting. So I'm really not too concerned about really what they're going to be asking me to do. Given that I'm still 65 feet up my back line with, with the addition.
You got a lot of pavement here and there on the property.
I currently really don't.
Survey shows walkways, this, that, the other. You don't know what the engineer's going to say, but it's, you could ask the board to vote on it now, subject to the engineer's approval, or because it's so close to the zoning requirement, or go over and find out what you're getting into and come back.
That's right. With all due respect, the stock market's booming right now. If I wait another month or two months, I'll okay.
He also, he also indicates in, in paragraph two that there's no grading plan, so you may have to apply for what's called a soil moving permit.
Okay. Yeah, let me talk to them, and then we'll readdress.
So do you want to, you want the board to consider the application tonight, or do you want to talk to him and come back?
No, we'll talk to them and come back. They said the stock market is booming right now, so if I got to wait a little, a little bit longer, I'll okay.
Nora, may we have a.
We're going to carry you to.
You want to move forward?
Wait, hold on, she's checking with the boss.
We're going to vote.
Okay, so then.
What is your opinion? What is your?
Yeah, what do you want to do?
I'll take the vote.
Okay, so then explain to the board why it is that you need this particular addition.
Currently, my house right now, it's a 1965 ranch. The hallway bathroom, the door was widened. It is roughly eight feet by 12. Actually, seven feet by 12, the one half being the vanity sink and then the tub. So the entrance to go in is just wide enough for me to enter. I can't turn, I can't pivot, so it's tough to get on the toilet, as well as get into that tub. The master bathroom, if you want to consider the master bathroom within the master bedroom, is four by seven. So then you walk in, the toilet's right there, and to the left is the shower. I really can't even get in the shower, even though the door is widened. So ultimately, I want to add the addition so I can then have an accessible bathroom, a large enough bedroom to turn around, as well as make the hallway bathroom large enough that's accessible as well.
Okay, and I, and I don't mean to be disrespectful. I just want the record to reflect, you are in a wheelchair, correct? Okay, and those, the things that you're requesting are to accommodate your particular situation. Is that right? I just wanted to make sure the record knew that because it.
Isn't need. You need it.
I need it.
Are there any questions from the board?
No.
No questions. Any questions from the audience? In, in regard to the gentleman's testimony tonight? Is there anyone in the audience that is in favor of this application? Is there anyone in the audience opposing this application? I see none. Would one of our members like to frame a resolution, please, with the subject to the engineer's approval?
I'll handle it.
Thank you.
Obviously, this is something that you need, and, you know, it's a, a needed, a necessary thing to do, so that's why I'll be voting yes. So the application 25:58, Timothy Kelly, 3 Noble Street, block 408, lot 7, zone R3, to approve C variance to construct in addition contrary to section 430-35, columns 10 and 13. We have to put in there.
Yes, subject to the.
Subject to the, complying with the recommendations of the engineer. Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Musarella?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Gragnani?
Yes. Your application is approved. You will be receiving a letter. Speak to the engineering department, please, and after that has been taken care of, then you can apply for your permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Application 25:20, Jigger Patois, 359 North Bevick Road. C variance to construct a one-story foyer addition, two-story addition at rear, second-story addition over existing one-story. Covered entrance with overhanging element to office entrance, one-story covered porch to main dwelling. Front stairs, air conditioning unit on concrete pad and driveway. This is a replacement. Contrary to section 430-35, columns 10 and 13. This application was carried from July 9th, 2025. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph O'Neill of Garefallow, New Jersey, here on behalf of the applicant. I was called because of a discussion at the first meeting on this application. There was some confusion as to the size of the office being built. I looked into that. Of course, the size of the office is mirroring something that was done for, by my office, actually, for the original applicant, Lou Renzo. But the application is presented to you this evening. The office is going to comply with the conditional use standards because of the addition on the second floor. So that's not going to be an issue. What might be an issue is the lot is undersized, has been this whole time. It is not strictly a condition of the use, and I certainly think it can be read as a condition of the conditional use. So we're applying for a D variance for that. That's really the only variance except for a variance for building coverage, which is actually being reduced. Impervious coverage is being reduced. And I wanted to bring that up because in my client's packet, there's one of those engineering brothers asking about whether or not they should come in. lawyers, asking about whether or not they should come in and discuss stormwater. My calculations on the engineering letter, I'll give you credit for existing coverage, it's taking it all as a new build in an empty field, which is not the way to do it, so I would ask right up front that if the board sees fit to approving this application, we ask that it just be conditioned on discussions with the engineer, not a strict requirement that it be done before the building permit condition, so my lot can be for. I haven't had a chance to talk to the engineering department, that's my fault, I just didn't have the opportunity to do that before the application, we kind of jumping on a moving train. So with that, I would go ahead and get right to the application. That's all right?
So the only variance is the lot size.
Which is pre-existing.
Which is pre-existing, right? That's the only actual variance, and then they.
Well, the, the exist, the impervious coverage is going to be a variance.
Right.
It's going to be less of a variance, but it's still going to be.
Okay. The, the Board of Adjustment Review that the board has from the zoning department has, has the impervious coverage increasing from thirty-eight-point-six-five to thirty-eight-point-eight-five. Is that accurate, or is that not accurate?
Okay. So we'll get into that.
You'll get into that? Okay, great.
Yeah, we'll correct it.
Okay, perfect.
So let's go ahead and talk to you. Oh, yeah. Got a packet, we're going to mark this packet as A-one.
I passed her out last time.
Oh, this is the same one as last time?
Same one.
I think you had.
Third underings.
I think you had copies for it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
This right here?
Yeah.
What was A-one?
Yeah, we already have it.
Big difference in what's there. So why don't you go ahead and describe, we were just talking about the variance condition. Spell that out first.
Yeah, so we're here to apply for two variances, building and impervious. The existing building coverage per our calculation is fourteen-point-eight.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. The existing building coverage is fourteen-point-eight percent, and what we're proposing is nineteen-point-one percent per hour calculation.
Wait, hold on, say that again?
The existing is fourteen-point-eight percent, and the proposed is nineteen-point-one percent. Our calculations also include the building overhangs, which last time was discussed to not include them.
Okay.
But for this case, it's still included. And the existing impervious is thirty-nine-point-nine-five percent, and we are reducing it to thirty-nine-point-six percent. And we're doing that by pretty much reducing the existing oversized driveway and parking lot, so we're taking away impervious coverage from that.
So the proposal is basically what the board sees in front of it, which is, it's completely a brick dot home.
Yeah.
It's the.
Okay. So the existing house is a bi-level home. The lower level has an existing two-car garage, a family room, a full bathroom, and on the left side of the house is the existing physical therapy office. On the upper level, you have your living, kitchen, dining, and the bedroom suites on the right side. For the proposed improvements, we're proposing a two-story addition in the rear of the house and a addition to the front foyer. In the rear of the house, on the bottom level, we're adding a game, game area, lounge, and a small bedroom. The entry area from the garage also gets a little larger, so they're going to have a more welcoming area. On the upper level, the kitchen gets larger, it gets shifted in the front, and over the existing physical therapy office, we're adding a addition, a two, a single-story addition above, which is going to have their bedrooms, three bedrooms overall, on the left side of the house. The exterior is also getting a complete facelift with new siding and new roof. The new roof will be using a hip configuration to minimize the.
Can you speak up a little louder, please?
Sorry. The, the new roof will have a hip configuration to minimize the overall height and ensure that it blends in within the surrounding neighborhood. And overall, we don't see any detriment to the public with this proposal. The exterior aesthetic is to enhance the streetscape of South Bevick Road, North Bevick Road, sorry.
The last time you were here, there was a discussion about the percentage of the physical therapy space.
Right.
Compared to the percentage of the floor area as a whole.
Right.
And a discussion about whether a variance for that conditional use was required. I believe your testimony was that you felt that a variance was not needed for that because you met the condition, correct?
Right. So the requirement was thirty percent. The existing is forty-nine-point-two percent, and with the addition, we're bringing that percentage down to twenty-five-point-eight percent.
Which means you don't need a variance for that?
For that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. No further questions for this.
Members of the board, do you have any questions of the testimony given by this gentleman? I see none.
So if I understand the request that Mr. O'Neill was making, you're requesting that the resolution of the stormwater management measures be a condition of the issuance of a building permit as opposed to a zoning permit?
Absolutely.
Is that what you're asking?
That is correct.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the testimony given this evening by this gentleman? Do you have any other witnesses, Mr. O'Neill?
I do not.
The board doesn't have any other questions? Anyone in the audience is in favor of this application? Please come forward. Is there anyone in the audience that is opposed to this application? Please come forward.
Last meeting, we have testimony that the properties in Jordan is well-developed, you couldn't cure the exercise.
I don't remember that testimony specifically, but it was true.
I don't know if my notes would be on this one, I don't know why.
I don't think so, because I actually did listen, watch it today, because I wanted to refresh my recollection about the zoning issue. I don't think you actually had testimony about that, so if you want to put that testimony in, that's fine.
I could bring the property owner up and he'll testify that the neighborhood's well-developed around it.
Well, I think, I think the plan was submitted showed that.
Yeah.
So I think all he has to do is verify what I just said.
Can you repeat that, please, Mr.?
The Jordan properties are developed.
Yeah, they're ready to double up.
Would one of the members like to frame a resolution, please? To approve this application, excuse me. Somebody like to recommend, recommendation to approve the application?
So we're proving it subject to the.
You're approving it subject to the stormwater management measures be resolved to the satisfaction of the township engineer prior to the issuance of a building permit?
Okay.
We, Mr. O'Neill has made that request in a previous application, and it seemed to work just fine.
One of our members, please?
Application twenty-five, colon twenty, Jigar, Patwa, three fifty-nine North Bevick Road, block four-eight-four, lot one, zone R-three, stay to issue a grant of variance to construct a one-story foyer addition, two-story addition at rear, second-story addition over the existing one-story covered entrance with overhang element to office entrance, one-story covered porch to main dwelling, front stairs, air conditioning unit on concrete pad and driveway, replacement contrary to section four-thirty dash thirty-five, column ten and thirteen. Compensate with the stormwater management to the engineering department complex.
Right. And in addition, the, the variance for the size of the lot as well, correct?
Ah, variance, the undersized lot, lot coverage.
Which is still undersized, yes.
Too much, is it enough, or you want me to say more?
Nope, I think that's it. I think you got it.
Second.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Mazzarella?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Brignani? Yes.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark.
Be notified, thank you. Application twenty-five, colon thirty-nine, Mohammed Hassan, three Graham Court, block one-ninety-nine, lot eight, zone R-three, a C variance to legalize driveway expansions contrary to four-thirty, sections four-thirty dash two-seventy-five, by, and sections four-thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen.
Ten.
Ten.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You can sit down, please. Can you state your name and spell your last name?
My name is Mohamed Hassan, three Graham Road, Pasadena.
Okay, now I understand that you have expanded your driveway.
Yes.
Okay? And it seems that you might have not requested permission to expand your driveway before you did it, is that right?
Yes, actually, I didn't know, I thought it's my driveway, I can expand, so.
Can you speak up, please?
Speak into the microphone, please.
Yeah, I thought like it is a driveway, and the contractor, he told me that he will take the permission, but he didn't give the permission, then I got the notice, so that's was the reason.
Right, so you got a notice of violation, is that right?
Yeah, I got the notice, then I requested that it is already built and I need this.
Okay. So, so you're asking for two different variances, one for driveway setback and one for impervious coverage, okay? Understand that?
Like, I expanded the driveway.
Okay, you expanded the driveway.
Yes.
But you made the driveway too close to the property line.
Yeah, yes.
Three feet.
Because I need the parking for, at least for four cars, so that was the reason, because if I, it would be shorter than, it didn't make any purpose, that was the reason.
So that was going to be my question. Why does the driveway need to be two feet from the property line instead of the required five feet from the property line?
Like, I think on the other side, I made around, I can say, because I have the paper, like four, five feet, and on the other side is a two feet, so it make like, that was the reason, because I want the two feet on the, I can say, right-hand side.
Property line, towards the property line?
Yeah, towards the main door. Like, it's too close to the property line, from there, it's one foot from the property line, and the other one is the, like, two feet, like.
Well, you're, the driveway that you built.
Hmm.
Is two feet from the property line, correct?
Yes.
It's supposed to be five feet from the property line.
That I didn't know.
Now, you didn't know, right?
Yes.
Now you do.
Yes, now I know.
And so, is it two feet from the property line because you need to park four cars in the driveway?
Yes.
Is that why you built it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Now, have you seen the memo from the municipal engineer?
I got only the letter, like, I have to come to the office and see the, like, the code, the code officer.
You got a letter from the court?
Yeah.
Okay. This is an extra copy. Why don't you take that?
Okay.
Okay, so the municipal engineer is indicating in the memo that you may have to install some stormwater mitigation measures. Do you understand that?
Okay.
In order to prevent stormwater from roaming onto your neighboring property.
Okay.
Okay? The board usually requires applicants to comply with those before they grant variances such as the ones you're requesting.
Okay.
Do you want the opportunity to speak to the municipal engineer about what that might require before the board imposes that as a condition of approval? Or do you want, or are you comfortable that you'll comply with that requirement? Understand what I'm asking you?
Yes.
Do you want time to think about it and figure out exactly what you're going to be required to do before you agree to it?
And the cost of what it, what it would be entail?
Yeah, the best way is I have to talk to the engineer, like.
Okay, so you want an opportunity to talk to the engineer and then find out what he's going to require before the board makes you do that, is that right? So you want to come back a different night after you talk to the engineer?
Yeah, sure, because, because I don't know what I have to do, I have to talk to the engineer regarding this.
That's wise decision.
Yeah.
So you want the board to carry your application to another night to give you a chance to do that, right?
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Mr. O'Neill, please? I can put you on February fourth.
So you're going to probably need to tell, do you have a lawyer representing you in municipal court?
No.
Okay, so make sure you tell the court that you're on for February fourth.
Yes, I, I.
Okay.
I will do the on fourth.
Yes.
Motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Yeah, no further notice and all extensions, correct?
Thank you.
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'd like to see you back on February the fourth at seven-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Application twenty-five, colon forty-five, Luis Aldana, one eighteen, Brigenton Drive, block two-nine-four, lot twelve-point-one, zone R-four, a C variance to legalize a rear covered patio attached to the dwelling, rear covered structure, a shed, rear pavers, patio pavers behind the driveway, concrete area around rear shed contrary to section four-thirty dash ten, C, shed side and rear yards, section four-thirty dash thirty-five, column eight, rear covered structure, rear patios, pavers, and concrete area around shed, sections four-thirty dash thirty-five, column nine, rear pavers, patio, and concrete area around the shed, section four-thirty dash thirty-five, columns ten and thirteen.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Are you both going to testify?
I'm just going to translate for him.
Ooh, hold on a second.
No, he understands, I'm doing it.
Okay. Do you, do you need an interpreter?
No, 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 he understands, I'm just going to talk with him, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that creates an issue, okay? So let's see if we can do it in English.
Okay.
And if we, we may have to come back anyways because of what we're about to talk about, but let's see how we do, okay? Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, you can sit down. Okay, and could you just identify yourself for the record?
Tanya Salazar, one eighteen Bridgeton Drive.
Okay, and what's your relationship to Mr. Aldana?
My father.
Okay. You also reside at the residence?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Aldana, it appears as though you did a lot of work on the exterior of the house without receiving any permits, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the, what exactly did you do in terms of improvements to the, to the exterior of the house? What, what projects did you do?
So we did a hangover in the back, it's a, I'm not.
So I need to swear, you in?
Yeah.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
No.
You can sit down. Are you familiar with the property?
Yes.
You live there, correct?
Yes, yeah.
What's your relationship to Mr. Aldana?
My father.
Okay, so can you explain to the board what improvements your father did to the property before getting permits?
Um, yes, we did a hangover in the back, uh, there was already an existing shed, but it was deteriorating, so we replaced it, um, we also did, um, like, walkways in the, in the backyard, um, from the front to the back.
Can you speak a little bit louder?
Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, we did walkways from the front yard to the back, uh, just to do a little walk to the back with the hangover, and, um, we put, like, I'm not sure how to say it, it's, um, a concrete wa, not a concrete wall, a wall, um, in the driveway, like, uh, to signal where the driveway ends.
Okay, did you get building permits?
No.
Did you get zoning permits?
No.
Okay, so you didn't get any permits, right?
No. We weren't aware, um, the people that we did it with, it was like, just friends or other people that could help us with, and so none of us knew, because we just thought that, since it was already there, we could just expand there, add on to it to enhance it, we didn't, no, we needed the permits to do so.
Okay, now, the municipal engineer issued a memo dated August twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Has your father seen that memo?
No, we haven't seen it at all.
Okay, you might want to take a look at it, and you can keep that copy. So what the municipal engineer is suggesting is that there was a substantial increase in the impervious coverage by all the work that your father did on the property, and that has caused concerns with respect to stormwater runoff.
Yeah, of course.
And the municipal engineer is suggesting, and requiring, in fact, that your father, as a condition of approval of what he's done, addressed that stormwater management issue.
Of course.
Okay? So, the first question I want to ask you and your father is, does your father want the opportunity to talk to the municipal engineer about what might be required, and whether he might want to remove some of the things that were constructed, okay, before asking the board to approve this application?
Yes, we would like to.
Okay. Um, I don't know if the board has any comments about the amount of work that Mr. Aldana did, um, to his backyard, as to how the board feels about whether, um, I don't know, whether Mr. Aldana and his daughter would benefit from any comment that the board might have about this particular issue.
I guess so.
While we sent him on his way, I don't, I don't know, I don't want to speak for any of the board, obviously.
I guess I'll throw this out there, I mean, obviously, you're going to see how much it's going to cost to take care of the stormwater management. Um, with everything you put onto the property, it might be cheaper to take a lot of it off, just use that, keep that in your mind when you go talk to the engineer, um, I'm sure it looks great, but you have to get a permit for, you know, this much work, I think we've legalized stuff before, but this is a lot, and for us to consider legalizing it, uh, it's going to take a lot.
Yeah, impervious coverage is significantly higher, almost fourteen, fifteen hundred square feet, so it is a very expensive one, just you might consider something to reducing it, and after doing that also, you have to talk to the engineer department and minimize.
Okay, so you want to come back?
Yes, of course.
After you figure out whether you want to remove some of it, whether you want to add some stormwater measures, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is that correct, Mr. Aldana? Okay, great.
February eleventh, seven thirty.
Okay. Yep, and no further notice and you'll grant all extensions, correct? And you may want to...
No.
I don't know if you want to talk to an engineer to figure out what the best thing to do to resolve this issue is, I'll leave that up to you.
Motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, before I leave, do we have to fill anything out, or do we just come back on February eleventh?
Well, you need to go see the town engineer, find out what he's going to suggest, then
follow maybe the advice of building that, that you may need an engineer to get involved with it.
Your own engineer.
Thank you, thank you.
And you might want to, as was suggested by two board members, you might want to consider removing some of the impervious coverage.
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Take note of what is over on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, there is, in fact, yeah, Berkowitz. It appears as though, at least one of the things that you've built is actually on your neighbor's property.
Yeah, we saw that on the, um, plan, I'm not sure why it's there, it's not at all anywhere near the neighbor's property.
You may have to have the survey redone, then.
Yeah, you may have to have a surveyor out there, and an engineer out there to actually look at it. Okay, you understand?
Yep, thank you.
Did you vote on that?
Just swing the wrong favor.
Yeah.
You need, I think you need, you need to vote on Carrie, right?
Yes.
Did you have it first or the second?
Yes, we did.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you when...
Thank you.
You didn't do a, a favor.
Yes, one favor, yes.
Yeah, all right, yes, yes.
Okay, the survey was done, John has mentioned the survey was done.
Oh, yes, February eleventh. February eleventh. Take it there were other people here on that application.
Oh, yes.
Were there members of the public on that application?
Yes.
Did you understand it was carried to February eleventh?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Application twenty-five, colon, forty-four, Dollar Tree, twenty-nine hundred, Route ten, lot eighteen, lots eight, zone O dash T, a C variance for installation, installation of a second wall sign.
Okay, can you put your parents on the record, please?
Yes. Good evening, board members, uh, my name is Ryan O'Sullivan, I'm from the firm Fox Rothschild, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Dollar Tree Stores, Inc. Dollar Tree Stores are seeking approval from you today.
Guys, guys.
Sorry, go ahead, you're fine. Uh, for a, a C two variance in connection with the installation of a backlit sign on the facade of the building at leases, located at twenty-nine twenty State Route ten, Morris Plains, New Jersey, in block eighteen, lot eight. Uh, Dollar Tree already has a storefront sign that is located on the facade of the building, which faces the parking lot, uh, tonight's application concerns a second sign on the storefront that Dollar Tree wishes to place on the facade that faces NJ Route ten. The sign is essentially a, or in the same place of, a sign that the former tenant, Drug Fair, had that was facing NJ Route ten. Um, notice has been provided in accordance with the township's zoning ordinance and the New Jersey's municipal land use law, um, the applicant is also seeking any other waivers, approvals, and their variances as may be required upon analysis and testimony regarding the plans and other application materials. Uh, approval of a C two variance is appropriate here, as the installation of the second sign would advance certain purposes of the MLUL, specifically Purpose A, Agent I, and the zoning ordinance, uh, and can be granted without substantial detriment to public good, or really any detriment, um, and would provide benefits that would outweigh any detriment caused by the deviation, and would not substantially impair the intended purposes of the MLUL and zoning ordinance. Additionally, the sign would allow for safer navigation to the site, as the sign would allow Dollar Tree's customers to easily identify it from Route ten, and create a desirable visual environment with an aesthetically pleasing, modern signage at the end cap of the shopping center. Um, to further comment on the specifics of the signage, I'm accompanied by, uh, Brian Robinson of Anchor Signs, Inc., with me to my right, um, Anchor Signs prepared the plans that are before you tonight, um, and Mr. Robinson will prepare, uh, will present any testimony regarding the technical aspects of the signage, uh, and answer any questions the board may have. Additionally, I also have with me Melissa Maialletti, who's, uh, sitting on the bench right there, um, she is a district manager at Dollar Tree, and she can answer any operational, business-related, uh, questions the board may have.
So the, is the only variance the fact that it's a second wall sign?
Correct, yeah, just the second, uh, storefront sign, if where only one is permitted.
Okay, and does the sign comply in terms of, of size requirements with the zoning ordinance?
My understanding is yes, but...
Okay, okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your names, spell your last name.
Uh, Brian Robinson, R O B I N S O N.
Okay.
And, Mr. Robinson, just quick background, um, what's your position at Anchor Signs?
Field service technician.
Okay, and how long have you been in that role?
Fifteen years.
Okay, and, um, uh, did you prepare the plans tonight for the board?
I did not prepare the plans, that takes place in our office, we have an entire permitting department.
But you're familiar with them, right?
Yes, I have them right here, I do.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, so, Mr. Robinson, the sign, the signs that we presented to the board tonight, do they comply with the technical requirements of the township?
I believe so.
Besides the signage?
Yes.
Regardless, you're not asking for a variance for size, correct?
We are not, no.
You're just asking for a variance for the second sign?
Yes, correct, the second sign.
What's the plan on illumination?
Uh, well, they're internally illuminated LEDs.
Hours of operation?
What's that?
Hours, is it twenty-four hours illumination, or?
The sign on twenty-four hours?
Mm-hmm.
No, they usually turn off about, they're on a time clock, they usually turn off thirty to forty-five minutes after the store closes, so that'll just depend on store hours.
Business hours.
Business hours, correct.
Well, you say usually, is that going to be the fact?
Well, yeah, well, there's a time clock set on the inside of the store, it can be changed, it's a, you know, an actual clock, so usually it's...
You know, whether it's half hour, forty-five minutes?
Depends on the...
My recommendation was you shut it off, non-business hours.
Yeah.
That's what you both planned to do.
Yes, they usually, usually the signs stay on for the, when the parking lot lights go off, or that timeframe, they usually leave them on, like I said, most Dollar Trees I've been to is thirty minutes after store is closed, they turn off automatically.
Well, you have someone here who's going to testify about that, right?
Right, yes, uh, if Maialletti can, uh, come and answer in terms of the, the hours, I understand, I'm, I'm not going to testify.
So, so this says that it, there used to be a sign there for the old, uh, renter, or the old business?
Correct, yeah, there was a, um, there was a, there was signage on that, the exact portion of the, the facade, um, for the prior tenant, which was Drug Fair.
And do you know if they had one in the front as well, did they have two signs, or?
I, I believe so, yes.
And there's a sign, um, sign C that is existing on Route ten to the entrance.
There's two monument signs, right?
Right, correct, yeah, there's two monument signs, and, yeah, Dollar Tree is on both those monuments.
That's not, those are already there, right?
Right, those are already existing.
They're existing.
Anything else from this witness?
No.
Any member of the board have any questions of this witness on his testimony?
No.
And for the record, there are no members of the public present.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, then, Melissa, I'll just call you just to go over hours of operation. Raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name, please.
Melissa Maialletti, last name is M A I A L E T T I.
Okay, Melissa, um, what's your, what's your role at Dollar Tree?
District manager.
And, and how long have you been district manager?
For twelve years.
Okay, and, and how long have you been at Dollar Tree?
Twenty-six years.
Okay, and are you familiar with the store at twenty-nine twenty State Route ten on Morris Plains?
Yes, very.
Okay, um, and I, I understand the board has a question about the hours of operation related to the, uh, lighting of the signage, um, could you give us an idea of what the hours are generally like at Dollar Tree in terms of the business operation?
So, right now, there are seven days a week, nine to nine, and the lights come, usually go off, um, as the sign guy said, um, usually like thirty minutes after we close, just until our associates leave the parking lot, usually goes off, but there's a timer in the building that's adjusted based on what we want it to do.
And, and that's, and that's currently, right now, that is, that are the hours, but I understand that they, they might fluctuate depending on busy season versus not.
Yes, so in December, there's a few days before Christmas, that the hours will go to eight AM to ten PM.
Okay, okay.
And you can adjust the timer within the building?
Yes.
So you'd be agreeable to shut off thirty minutes after, or forty-five?
Thirty minutes after we close.
Fine.
Any questions of the board? This, testimony given this evening? Is no one in the audience? Would one of the members like to frame a resolution, please?
Application twenty-five, colon, forty-four, Dollar Tree, twenty-nine hundred, Route ten, block eighteen, lots eight, zone four dash T, to grant a C variance to install installation of a second wall sign.
Under condition that?
Under the condition that the lights turned off thirty minutes after the business hours.
Okay.
You turn them on at eight o'clock in the morning, or if it starts out, or?
Um, I, to be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I've never...
All right, so we'll just deal with the option.
Yeah.
It's usually a photo cell, so on the sign, so, like, sensor, and once it starts getting dark, that the sign gets on, the timer. Got it. Don't have to worry about that. Sorry.
Your second?
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Brignani.
Yes, application's approved, we're receiving a notice, and at that time, you can apply for your permits. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, board.
Do we have to thank the township engineer for assuring me?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't take anybody's votes to leaving.